All right then, since we have six people, I'd like for everyone to turn on their microphones so that Nicole can do the roll call. So we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Nicole, could you go ahead and do our roll call? We are being recorded. And I guess in some areas, some of you all still have a transcription. Nicole?
Yeah, let me pull up.
Okay.
Sarah Jones?
Present.
Bonnie Schaff?
Present.
Fay Moore?
Present.
Nicole Coleman, present. Christina Isbell? Joanne Inquest?
Christina's trying to come on.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Apparently my husband's name's on my thing. Sorry.
Joanne Inquest?
She was here for...
She's still there.
She's officially online, but I'm not sure her audio is working.
Okay. Albertine Allen?
Here.
Charlene Livsay?
Here.
Veronica Martin? And Angie Nelson Deitch? Okay, so currently there's two absent.
Okay, so let the record reflect that we do have a forum with the two absent. So we will move on with our meeting. Thank you, Nicole, for the roll call. So we have the approval of the minutes, December 16, 2021. Bonnie was so gracious to resend them today, so I hope you guys received them. And she sent them out before. She sent them out back the same night of the meeting, but she sent them out again today.
I might want to point out, want to point out, Fay, that that was last year that she sent them?
Yes, yes, last December. And then she resent them today, just in case we had forgotten, because the time was last year. So she resent them today, so I hope everyone got a chance to refresh yourselves with the minutes. And I'd ask for a vote on the approval of the minutes for December 16, so we can send them to City Hall.
You need a motion.
I need a motion, yes.
So move.
Second?
I second.
Char? For the people that don't know us, we need to say our names for the recording.
Charlene second.
Thank you.
And then do I have to do a roll call approval?
All in favor, show with your right hand some place, or your hand up. All in favor. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Have to do a roll call.
Charlene Livsay?
Yes.
Albertine Allen?
Yes.
Joanne Inquest?
She's, she's got her glasses, she's saying yes.
Okay. Christina Isbell?
Yes.
Nicole Coleman, yes. Fay Moore?
Yes.
And Bonnie Schaff?
Yes.
Sarah Moore. I meant Sarah Jones.
I wasn't present for that meeting, so do I still vote?
No.
If you review the minutes, you can. It's not against the rules to do that.
Okay, yes.
And Veronica Martin has joined us.
And my apologies for being late. Fay, for some reason, you keep sending it to the wrong, the email I don't use.
I'm sorry. We hopefully won't have that problem next year, because you'll be sending it to someone else. Veronica Hasbury, did you call Veronica, Nicole?
Nope, I did not see that she joined us. Veronica Martin?
We were voting on the minutes.
Here.
And do you approve of the minutes?
Yes, I saw it.
Perfect. All approved.
Okay, so we'll move on to our treasurer's report.
All right, so I'm gonna share my screen.
I pulled up.
Although the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, try again.
Okay, I promise not to do anything obscene. And if we can't share my screen, I'll give you it verbally. So there's been no changes in the balance of our treasurer's report from December. We're still reflecting a balance of $15,224.75. There's been no new deposits and no disbursements.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report as read, as stated, since we couldn't share the screen.
I motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I second.
So that was Nicole and Veronica.
Yep. Veronica second.
Roll call vote.
Sarah Jones? Sarah Jones?
She's...
Bonnie Schaff?
Yes.
Fay Moore?
Yes.
Cole Coleman, yes. Christina Isbell?
Yes.
Joanne Inquest? Joanne?
For some reason, her audio seems to be off.
Yeah.
And she looks like she...
She's not in, yes.
She can raise her hand. If you can't get her audio working. If you go to reactions, you can raise your hand if you approve.
How neat.
Joanne, can you hear us?
She's saying no.
She can't hear us?
She's saying no.
Okay.
She had no, so I don't know how she hears us. Or maybe she meant she couldn't respond.
There's a transcript at the bottom, maybe she's reading.
Oh, yeah, that's right, she's probably reading. Oh, is there anything in the chat? No. I don't see anything in the chat.
Send me something to her.
And maybe text her or something.
Yeah, Angie's sending her something. Okay, so we're gonna move on while she's doing that.
Okay. Albertine Allen?
Yes.
Charlene Livsay?
Yes.
Veronica Martin?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Angie is sending something to Joanne to try to see if we can work out our audio. And while we're waiting, next on the agenda is election of officers. And before we actually do that, I'd just like to thank everyone for helping during COVID. I mean, it was a struggle, but we were able to at least do some Zoom meetings and do some discussions and have a planning session. So I really appreciate you taking your time out of your busy schedule to work with the Commission for Women. I'm gonna try to glean something out of our minutes that we did accomplish. There were a couple of things, I believe, that we accomplished during those, during our minutes and during our sessions. So I will be trying to get the annual report ready for the oncoming Chair. And myself will probably do a presentation to the City Council in March. We're looking to try to get on the agenda in March. I also looked at our membership at the Commission, and the first one to expire would be Joanne Inquest, and she expires June 5, 2022. And then the next one would be Nicole expires December 31, 2022. So everyone is really in a position to serve in a position. So Angie Deitch, our liaison, Council Liaison, was getting together the slate. And Bonnie helped out a whole lot. Thank you, Bonnie, for all of your calls to help out getting that slate together. So I think she has the slate.
Yep, I do.
Okay, so we'll go ahead then, and I'll turn the elections of the officers over to our Council Liaison, Angie Nelson Deitch.
And I have Joanne on my phone, just so she can hear us. And at least we'll be able to get her to be able to vote. And I have her on speaker as well.
Okay.
All right, perfect. So the slate of officers that we have going for 2022, we have for President, for Chair, Christina Isbell. And we'll start with the, let me, let me present the slate first and see if there's consent to just do them all at once, or if you want to do them one by one. So we have Christina Isbell as Chair, Albertine Allen as Vice Chair, Nicole Florick as Secretary, and Char, Char. How do you say your, your last name, Char? Your?
Unmuted.
I read my lips, I guess, Livsay.
Oh, it is? Okay, so I've been saying it right, okay. And Char Livsay as Treasurer. Is there anyone opposed to doing a vote for the entire slate of officers? Anyone opposed to that? No? Before I do that, I need to open it up for nominations from the floor as well. So I'll start with Treasurer. Are there any additional nominations from the floor for Treasurer? Any nominations for Treasurer? All right, those nominations are closed. Any nominations for Secretary from the floor? Any nominations for Secretary from the floor? All right, that one's closed. Any nominations for Vice Chair from the floor? Any nominations for Vice Chair? All right, and last but not least, any nominations for Chair? No, not, any nominations for Chair? All right, well, with that being said, our slate of officers are Christine Isbell for Chair, Albertine Allen for Vice Chair, Nicole Florick for Secretary, and Char Livsay for Treasurer. All those in favor to accept the slate as presented signify by saying aye, or you can raise your hand. And, well, you know what?
We have to do a roll call.
Well...
No?
It's an election, so, yeah, but let's do, let's do the roll call. I'll go ahead and do it. I'll start with Joanne Inquest.
Yes.
All right, Joanne, yes. Fay Moore?
Yes.
Bonnie Schaff?
Yes.
Christine, Christina Isbell?
Yes.
Char Livsay?
Yes.
Nicole Florick?
Yes.
Veronica Martin?
Yes.
All right, I turn the meeting over now to the new Chair, Christina Isbell.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. I'm excited for the opportunity to be in this spot, to see what we can do this year. And Fay, thank you so much for, for holding us together last year. And really, you know, I think we, we always do good work. There's always some good things that happen. And I think that we're living in a time where, where it is hard to connect. It is hard to make all these things happen. And I guess for, for, for me, I think this year, I'd really like to make some things happen. I'd like to see if we can really let people know who we are, really kind of defined, you know, who, what funding we can give, and what are these projects? So I'm, so I'm excited to kind of see what that, that will be. I guess what, what I do is just follow the guidelines, or do I talk? I mean, I definitely have some, some things, you know, to throw out to all of you, because I think if we collaborate together, we can, we can kind of build this, this year. Because I was looking over, and I'm sorry to say that I wasn't at that planning session, and it looks like there was some really great conversations, but how do we really follow through on those, those ideas and those tasks? And, and finding ways that maybe in our first month or two here, we focus on like a research development phase of like what we want to work towards, you know? And what's out there? Like, to be honest, I feel very disconnected. I'm not quite aware of everything that is going on. And, and I, and I want to know. Like, I don't know what everyone, even on our Commission, is doing all the time. Like, how do, like, if we on this Commission don't know each other well enough to know what we, you know, the broader community is doing, then how do we make the changes? How do we impact? I mean, I joined this Commission because I wanted to do some good. I wanted to, to help in our community, and I think that's why we're all, we're all here. So, yes. So I do see like, kind of three categories of stuff that we need to, to work through. Like a research and development phase. Like, who's out there? Who is doing really interesting work in Michigan City? You know? And in that phase, maybe we as Commissioners can kind of reach out and maybe bring people to talk to us, talk to us more about what people are doing in this community. I think we have to, there's also seems to be looking at this planning session that we have a real need for marketing, marketing and outreach. Like, again, getting the word out, how are we doing that? How are we letting people know that we have funding available? And then I think we as Commissioners need to understand what our giving goals are, as well as this fundraising plan. Because there was a lot of talk of different fundraisers, potentially partnering, and how will we make that happen? And how do we kind of connect with those other organizations? So those are kind of some things that I, that I see. Yeah, how does everyone else see our Commission moving forward this term?
I would agree. I think it's important to establish goals, like you mentioned, because that really helps guide what we're marketing and what organizations we're really trying to partner with. There's a lot of needs within our community, and so I think it's important to connect to see which areas that we can help the best.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And actually, Angie, maybe when it comes your turn, I've, I've been having a hard time finding, I know you mentioned a couple of months that were going to be these meetings about the Recovery Act funding that was available, and like different proposals or programs. And I think it would be important for us as Commissioners to kind of know what's being thrown out there. Like, do we want to follow in that line? Or do we want to take this, take our funding into another avenue that's not being supported as much this year? So maybe, and maybe you can help, but I, I just didn't know where to look. I went to the Michigan City website, but the government site, but I can't find where these conversations are being had. So...
Yeah, we've had, well, there's a committee now, so I, I guess that's one thing. There, there is a, a informal committee that the mayor's put together, but we did have a series of multiple workshops and to receive input. But this Commission at any time can draft the list and submit it to the City Council. And I, I highly encourage that anyway. If there's some things that you want to get done, what I suggest is, you know, you know, prioritizing what your goals are and just sending a list and say, hey, we would like to have money for this. This is important. And just remember, there are rules that we have to follow, but there is an entire bucket on, you know, social impact, social, you know, you know, thing. So, and I can send, have Gail, well, I can send, who's the Secretary now? I can send it to the Secretary, some of the documents that were used, like the final, the final rules for the ARP funds, and so that you can review them. But it's pretty broad for, and where you can spend money. But it's all about impact. And if you, if there are some programs that are going to impact, you know, women and the community, I think you just create that list of items and submit them.
Okay. Okay, good.
I'm trying to find my agenda. I am so sorry. There, I guess, I have three different emails that I've received. So make sure we're following the agenda, so I'm looking for...
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm not, this is old business. Sorry, I think I'm on old business.
Okay.
And so I guess for me, old business is kind of like, yes, sorry. Bonnie, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I really like what you said about having guest speakers at our meetings to learn about what's available, what's going on in the city. This is the only place I've ever heard anyone talk about, really, about women's health. This, this meeting is the only one, you know? And, and so there are areas like that that I think, and I think it would, I think we would have room, not room, time at our meetings, anyway, you know? We usually are done within an hour, less than an hour. So I think we'd have time too, but I think that would be very beneficial to us and then on Zoom to everybody that's watching it.
I totally agree with that. I know that the, I mean, we know that our zip code has one of the highest, you know, low, low birth rates, infant mortality and all that. So, I mean, to have, you know, speakers talk about that, and some of that, you know, is definitely related to living conditions and, and other things. So if that's something that the Commission, if, if you all pick topics each month and maybe have a speaker speak for 30 minutes, I think that's a value add to the community. I mean, I, I like that. I mean, you know, do your, do your business real quick and then give information for the rest, you know, of your meeting. That, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, Joanne is on cell phone, so I'm hoping you guys can hear her.
Okay, yes, thanks. I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to point out that our finest times, if you look back through the years, our finest times have been when we have heard from the community, people who had specific ideas, specific goals that we have accepted and we have supported with monetary funds. And we have to listen more to our community, give them the chance to be able to do that. I don't know what is, you know, perhaps we're not, with COVID and everything, people have not kept track of various Commissions that are meeting. We have to be in touch and make certain that people are tuning in, that they are listening to us, that they are responding. There are a number of organizations in this community, a number of people that are very sensitive to the needs of our community and, and can help us, you know, do the right thing. That's what's happened in the past, and I still have a great deal of confidence that that's the way to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Yeah. Well, good, I like, I mean, I like the idea of us really, you know, taking some time to kind of find out really what's going on here. But, but we will, we'll need your help to find these speakers too, right? So if there's a topic or something that you are like really behind, you know, really want us to know about, then maybe can, can you bring it to the table for us? Like, how, how, again, are we going, you know? I think there's categories, so I'm gonna back up for a second. I kind of look at maybe funding or how we want to like proceed with different areas, like education and arts, health and human services, business, entrepreneurship, and community development. Like, in those three categories, are there places where we can find people to help us, you know, talk to us about those programs, or if there's anything that we want? Like Fay, you just sent us that Workforce One program, but that seems like a really fantastic program. And, and I was actually wondering recently if we had anything like that in Michigan City. I mean, recently I found this, this program in Cleveland. Like, what are the big programs that are happening here that a lot of us don't know about? Like, in Cleveland, I just found out there's this program called Edwin's Leadership in Restaurant Institute, and the aim is to teach prisoners a trade. But as well as teaching them that trade, which they have classes that they send into the prisons, you can watch them in the prisons, it is a classically trained chef. So this space that they have includes a restaurant, a bakery, a butcher, and an event space, which are all open to the public. But they're, they're giving inmates a place to live rent-free. Relocation fees are paid in part by the Cleveland Browns. They get a driver's license, they get legal counseling, and they get healthcare. So it's not just a restaurant and event space and all of these other things, but it's actually doing good. You know, it's, it's giving people opportunities. So I want to know what we're doing in Michigan City that's doing that. You know, are there anything, is there anything on that line? Is there anything that we can help support and create that? And if it is for women's health, let's do it, you know, let's do something. So these are just things I wanted to throw out on the field for all of us to look at. And then we know we're gonna do a fundraiser this year. So again, you know, budgeting that out, figuring out. And I think once we do this research, once we like find out more what's going on, then we can really hone our fundraising, we can really hone to be really specific, which people will be more willing to give money towards than just giving to the Women's Commission. And then in the last two years, we haven't even given away enough funds. Like, I want to get rid of this $15,000, let's get rid of it and get more, right? Like, how can we keep that, that cycle going? Yeah. So now what do I do? What happens now? Sorry, I'm not running a meeting, and I'm rambling too.
That's okay, that's okay. We're, and I will say, we're having a workshop on, you know, how to run a meeting and Robert's Rules of Order next week on the 26th at 6:00 p.m. If you, if you have your agenda, basically, that's all you're gonna do is run through your agenda. And if there's actionable items, you'll ask for a motion. But we'll, it's gonna be fine. You're doing great, so...
But how do we get those actual items to the table? Is that me that's doing all of that, like throwing, getting that together? Or is it the Commission collaborating on it?
Well, I've been sending out, generally, the Chair sends out a notice about a week before the meeting, asking everyone to send things they want to put on the agenda. And I've been doing that, and I don't get any response, so then I come up with an agenda. So what you do now is follow the next item on the agenda, which would be public comment. But I don't think we have any public comment, nobody other than us here. I did invite about four people to this meeting tonight, but it doesn't look like we have, look like all we have is us.
Well, one thing I would like to add too is that, like, you, you talked about having committees. Maybe you have a committee that you have, you know, someone who does, who brings some ideas, you know, have a fundraising sub, a couple of groups, and then you have someone who has maybe a health. I mean, it sounds like women's health might be one of the priorities. So maybe that's something that you, you bring to the table, and everybody brings ideas to the next meeting on, you know, women's health issues that you would like to discuss or... And you don't have to always have a speaker, but just to do a brainstorming and maybe get public comment, if you say on the agenda, or one of our agenda items will be women's health initiatives, right? And you put that on the agenda for next month, and then you can target that. And then you can look at, you know, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month is in May. You know, maybe, you know, so you could look at it from like a holistic perspective and just each month have that's fundraising and a standing item that's women's health. You know, then you have, I almost said Dr. Allen. You have, you have... You know, with, you know, who's been at the Minority Health Coalition and, and maybe, you know, because there's, you know, it's disparate, you know, the...
Health disparities is a big issue here. We've been doing some things about health disparity as far as the hospitals go. We also have a person working with us that does Dua, and she follows the mom through prayer.
And she follows the mom through pregnancy, delivery and a year after. And so those are some places where the disparity is the greatest and that goes under infant mortality. So there are a lot of things that, yeah.
And, and if there's, uh, check with the hospital to see if they're having any time, a, any type of women's he- health fair. Maybe that's something that we could have a booth or have, you know, have something for citizens to want to, you know, stay, you know, in touch or whatever it is. I'm just throwing things out, but there's some opportunities that you can have a presence at, um, you know, the back to school rally. You have moms there, right? That's a, a great thing in August that, you know, so I, I would say try not to reinvent the wheel and, um, you know, really identify some places where you can be engaged, but with the money, you know, they're, they're always looking for funding for pamper stuff.
Lots of problems here too with lead, uh, in the homes. And that causes a problem with infants. It causes cancer, brain damage and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, there are just a lot of things, uh, like just breast cancer. Which you all, we always talk about, um, there's, uh, prostate cancer that it, it affects the man, but it also affects the family too and, and the wife. And so there are a lot of things. Doctor, uh, Ranson has done a lot of workshops for us. And so, you know, we could contact him to do a virtual presentation. Some of the churches would, would, uh, be there so they could hear it too and not just us.
Yes.
So you have the flexibility for the agenda is what we're showing you.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
One of the things that I might recommend is, um, you were talking earlier about, you know, we had the planned session and, uh, and that was so la, you know, that was last year. And I could use a, a pretty good refresher on, on the topics that we discussed. And what I might recommend for our next meeting is that we, we have a chance to review, um, minutes from our planning session. And then, uh, come back and refocus on that to, uh, then begin to figure out, okay, so here's what we said. Uh, further hone our priorities with that.
I completely agree with that, Charlene, that we take it and put them in priority order of what we're gonna do first, second, what we're gonna attempt to do first, second and third. I do believe we, in the past, we have had speakers come to our meetings. I don't know if you guys remember, we had the Dula Lady Come and also the, um, Casa woman come and talk about Casa and whatnot. And then most of our commissioners, um, have given us information on some of the topics that we've mentioned today. And so when you, if you look down on the agenda, the, a lot of those areas that you discussed are already covered by our commissioners. As long as they, uh, the, uh, the laws is on our commission, then when they leave, you know, like it's somebody in a different area.
Well, great. All right. This was very helpful. Thank you guys for all of this. Um, I will be again, more prepared and on the agenda and throw out some things to, to some of you to, for the support. So, but keep moving down then, cause then we'll maybe hear about some of the education things that are going, or Sarah's not here, but I will, maybe we'll get some, some, some information here and that, that will be helpful. So, um, that was old business, public comments.
I wanted to ask Angie for that date again for the twenty-sixth. What time is that workshop start? Uh, Roberts, uh, for how to run, how to, uh, conduct a meeting. You said the training is on January twenty-sixth. You're muted.
Um, it's Zoom. Let me see if I can put it in the, uh, the chat.
Okay.
It's at six o'clock and it's covering, um, a couple of things, um, providing notice for your meetings, your minutes to the clerk, you know, the different things that have to be done. Um, because, uh, we have to submit the, the minutes now for commission, boards and commissions uh, into a portal, I think once a month or something like that. So we have to make sure that all the commissions are timely and maybe come up with some template to help guide, um, people with minutes and talk about that a little bit. Cause some minutes are way too descriptive, um, and it really, the minutes only have to have actionable items, um, that we're taking, uh, more so than anything. But some, you know, we, some people do word for word and that's okay. Uh, but it's not, um, for the sake of, um, public record, it's typically, it just, you know, the actionable items, hey, there was discussion on this topic and move on. You don't have to get into, you know, all the different things that people said and all of that, but that's, uh, kind of been, um, it's all over the place. So just to give a little guidance, um, I used to serve as a national parliamentarian for another organization and, um, it's probably time that we do this with all of the boards and commissions. So, um, so it'll be the twenty-sixth. We'll record it, uh, as well. And, um, and I'll have a PowerPoint that I'll be, be able to share with everybody as well. And it's at six P M. So I'm, I'm looking for the link now.
I wanted to say, Angie, now this is long overdue. Uh, I, it's, it seems like people are, you know, with their first commission, they're not really prepared. You don't know exactly what to expect. I, I, with my first commission, it probably took me a year before I realized what changes needed to be made, what things we needed to do and, um, it, uh, it, it's, I'm, I'm really glad that we're doing some training now. Is that going to be open then to all people who are in commissions or just new people or?
Oh, oh, um, um, my goal is to, uh, do something once a quarter. Um, because again, everybody can't make it, but we'll record it. And then, you know, this one will be kind of high level, but then each quarter we'll target one specific thing and, and just try to have a couple of multiple, you know, many kind of training sessions. That way people can go back and look at them.
Okay. Yeah, as I said, long overdue, long overdue.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so.
When I find it, I'll send it out to just, I'll reply on, just send it to everybody.
Great. Thank you. Um, I guess Councilia's own's comments. What's our next?
I've said all my comments.
Yeah, okay, good. And then we're down now to the commissioners' comments, um, community health advocate.
Uh, I don't really have a comment, but we're, uh, not community health advocates. Is that what you're using, Faye, or you're using that in place of our name?
I couldn't remember your name, cause it changed. And I knew it had, I knew it had advocate in it.
No, it does not.
It doesn't have advocate, okay.
It's Minority Health Partners of La Porte County.
Minority Health Partners?
Partners of La Porte County. And I just wanted to welcome Joanne back. First time I seen her since she went to, was it Spain, Italy?
Spain, yeah.
Glad to have you back.
Yeah, good to be back, uh, and, and I had a delightful time too.
That's great.
Excellent. All right. Um, Sarah Jones, education is not here. Um, Joanne?
And she's here.
Oh, she is here. I don't have, see her on my screen. That's so weird.
She was here by phone.
Are you here, Sarah?
No, is Sarah here? I don't think.
I don't think she's here anymore. I think she might have been here early, but she's not. I don't see her.
No, I don't see her either.
So the next is League of Women Voters. Joanne, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Uh, actually, what I'm going to do tonight is because I think it's, it's important. This has been a very strange year, a couple of years, but, uh, specifically a very strange year politically. And I know I'm speaking very early for some people that they're not ready for voting or they're not thinking about voting, cause there's so much else on their mind, but I implore all of you, I implore all of you, I think it's a critical year for us to be thinking about the upcoming first primary and then general election that we'll have in Indiana. Uh, there, as, as you all know, and most of us have been focused on the national level, but, uh, we have lots to think about in our own state. And sometimes it's overwhelming with everything else going on with COVID, with the economy. Uh, but I, I, I feel that unless we start preparing now, we're going to push it aside and not really do an adequate job of voting. Obviously, I'm, I'm going to talk about the League of Women Voters and all that we have to offer to the public. We'll be having our, our Vote Four One One. And for those of you and I, unfortunately, I'm still running into so many people who don't know Vote Four One One. But it's one way of getting educated about specific candidates. And it's a nonpartisan way of doing it as well. Um, and you can think about now, as you hear about different candidates and you see, you hear more and more about it each day as we're preparing for the primary. If you have questions for people, if you have questions for specific, uh, candidates, think about them. You might send them into the League of Women Voters. We might use those on our, uh, on our Vote Four One One. Uh, Vote Four One One is, is for every candidate to be involved in. We don't charge the candidates. It's a, a free way of them to be able to communicate with all of us, all of their constituents. And so it's extremely important. Um, the other thing is we will be having our, um, our candidate forums when you will have a chance to hear and see and talk with and submit questions to again, uh, to the candidates. Uh, so I, once again, I implore you to think about how you're going to be doing that. You are welcome to join the league, of course, but you don't have to do that if that's what you don't want to at this point. But you could at least contact us and see if you get, wanna get on our mailing list and we can update you on what's happening. There will be a lot happening in our local, in our state legislature. A great deal happening, a, a great many bills coming forward. And we all need to be prepared for those and decide how we want to vote, how we want to vote, uh, for candidates. Thank you.
Joanne, I have a question. Um, are you guys gonna do a Zoom Legislation Day?
Oh, I'm sorry, say it again, please.
The League, a Zoom Legislative Day.
I have no idea at this point.
Oh, okay.
Do you, do you mean?
Candidate forums will be Zoom?
No, 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 no. Remember the, we used to have in-person, a Legislative Day meeting for the members of the League of Women Voters.
Yeah, like a breakfast, like legislative breakfast.
Legislative breakfast.
So we had, we had a Legislative Day at the state level already. I, I, I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about.
If you're, Faye, if you're talking about the legislative breakfast, we haven't talked about that yet for this year. But, uh, and we are going to be busy with, especially when the candidate forums have to be so early this year because of the, cause early voting starts so early. Um, I don't know how, I mean, maybe in April actually would, would be a time that we could have a legislative breakfast. But we'll definitely get that information out, um, as soon as we have that planned.
And as far as, as far as how things are being done, I know I went to a state meeting just before this one Zoom meeting and no one can decide how things are gonna be done. If it's going to be Zoomed, if it's, however, if we're gonna be face to face, nothing can be decided at this point, unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, great. Thank you for that. Um, and thanks so much for what you guys do. So important for today. Um, all right, mental health. Veronica Martin, um, is there anything that you'd like to?
Okay, I don't, I'm sorry. Hello, everybody. I do apologize for, uh, being late. I am still on the mend. Um, so I don't have, I'm not prepared for anything today.
No problem.
Um, hopefully about February. Um, but just so you all know, I had a, a road hater cup surgery and I've been sick for the past week. So I am still on the mend, which is why my camera is off, so. Um, so hopefully next month I will have something for you all.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and hope you feel better too.
Thank you.
Um, next, we have Faye with the N double A C P.
Yes, um, the N double A C P participates in the community. Uh, why, um, it used to be a breakfast, but because of COVID, we haven't had an actual breakfast. But we do, you can go to, uh, the YouTube link. You can view the MLK Junior Celebration on YouTube by going to the, uh, Martin Luther King Junior. Just go to YouTube, uh, dot com, Martin Luther King Junior, Purdue Northwest. It was awesome. It was awesome. Uh, the main speaker was, uh, Vicky, I think it's Vicky. She re, she received the Saginaw, uh, of the War Bash Award earlier, uh, uh, last year, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, she was the speaker and she spoke about criminal justice and, um, that was awesome. And Deion Campbell was the M C. And the young lady that sang, oh, she did a beautiful job. So it's still on YouTube. You guys can go and view that at any time. Um, the N double A C P is, is, is cheered up with Work One. That's why I was able to get that uh, notice and send that out to everybody. Um, we're, we're still working on a soul power um, program dealing with solar energy and teaching and training young men and women to be, uh, to install solar panels. And they're getting into their second phase with, uh, the N double A C P is sponsoring a bus to drive the students over to, I think it's in Gary or Hobart, the training. Uh, they still, they gotta be doing like a two-week training in person. They had to go to Hobart or Gary. So the N double A C P is sponsoring the bus. Uh, the transportation for, to go over there and that's in conjunction with Work One and the solar power for this area. And, uh, tonight at seven o'clock, the Progressive Dems, uh, is doing a, uh, is doing a, a Zoom forum tonight at seven o'clock. If you go to type in progressivedems.com, you should be able to pull it up. And, uh, three of the Michigan City Common Council members are gonna be presenting their vision for Michigan City tonight at seven o'clock on Zoom. So if you can't get it by just putting in progressive Dems, then if you go to the W W W dot P R O G D E M S L C dot com. Again, that's W W W dot P R O G D E M S I C dot C O M. And you should be able to pull up the link to get you on that Zoom presentation. And three of our city council members are gonna be talking. I think it's, uh, I think it's Michael Matt, uh, Dahlia and, um, uh, Brian Dabney. I think those, I believe those were the three that are gonna be talking tonight about their vision for Michigan City.
Nice.
Any questions? All right, I.
Thank you, Faye. Thank you so much. Um, next, we have nonprofit women's issues with Nicole.
Um, yeah, so Healthy Communities, I know, is looking for volunteers to help with their tobacco retail assessment that starts running in April, I, or starts running, I think in February till April. I know that that's one of the health issues in our counties, that it's a very high tobacco use county compared to others. Um, and Indiana as a state is pretty high compared to other states. Um, and then another I just want to announce that like June Brook helps with a lot of families in the area. Um, and they are going to have a new executive director in February. Um, Jean Anne Cannon is retiring and so the new director is Dr. Tammy Button.
Oh, I know her. She has the prenatal dental, um, skip, uh, skipping stone. What is it? Doggone it. I can't think of the name.
What's the new person, new person's name?
Dr. Tammy Button.
Is she someone that we would consider talking with us to share?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Okay, so.
Cause she's also done work, I believe, with health with pregnant women and children regarding dental.
Yes, yes, prenatal. It's dental care before and during pregnancy and after. It's very good.
All right. Um, Nicole, would you be able to reach out to her her to see if they would, she could come and talk with us?
Yeah.
Awesome. Um, all right, we've gotten through the, oh, it's not, yes, fine.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, but the celebrating Naomi Anderson is not on the agenda, but I would like to mention it real quick. Um, the installation of the sculpture happened last month since our last meeting, and I hope you've all seen it. It's an an impressive um sculpture in in Charles Westcott Park. And we're going to have the unveiling event in March, on March nineteenth, it's a Saturday. And the Women's Commission um donated five thousand dollars to this, which makes us one of the largest donors and um very important part of the the project. So I hope that uh everyone can plan to attend the unveiling. After the actual unveiling at the site, then we're gonna have a reception at the Lubesnik Center for the Arts. And that will be on Saturday, the nineteenth. So I hope you can come to that. And then also, um, along with the artwork, we also put, did a lot of research on Naomi Anderson's history and put together a digital archive at Purdue Northwest. And the librarian there, Joseph Coats, and I are making presentations um about Naomi Anderson. Uh, we're going to speak at Michigan City Public Library on Saturday, February nineteenth during um Black History Month for their event and one of their events. And then in um La Porte County Library on March twenty sixth, we'll be making a presentation too. So if you can um attend either of those, that'd be, that'd be good to see you if you want to know more about Naomi and her life.
Where is the presentation uh in February?
February, February nineteenth, Michigan City Public Library. It's at two P M.
Uh, what was the time for the nineteenth event? The the sculpture?
March nineteenth. Uh, we don't have the time yet, I think it will be four o'clock, but not sure about that yet. And the two, so we have two events in March, the unveiling and the La Porte um presentation. And those are both during Women's History Month. So, you know, that could be something that we would want to do to observe that, to maybe be involved in it for that for that reason too.
Oh, that's beautiful, good job, thank you. Um, all right, so that is our end of the uh agenda. Um, our next meeting date is February seventeenth at five thirty. Um.
So before we actually close out, um, I'd just like to maybe take this moment and thank Fay for uh serving us this past year. I know um it's, uh, you have a lot on your plate. Of course, I don't know when you never have a lot on your plate, but uh, and leading us through a very difficult time. So again, thank you very much for the work you've done for our commission. And um just welcome, welcome, welcome to you, Madam Chairperson. So I'm looking forward to twenty twenty two.
Awesome.
Thank you, Charlene. And I'd like to say thank you again, Christina, for stepping up.
Fay, I'll be reaching out. Um, fantastic, it's gonna be, you know, we we just gotta create the energy now. We gotta really make movements happen. Um, we've been been in this still place and I mean, you just gotta, you gotta shift, you gotta help it happen, so. Um, I appreciate all of you and um, thank you. And I will send out ahead of time to get input from you um on the agenda ahead of time and we'll figure out how to get that all to you in the right time too. So, um, yeah, okay.
Should I make a motion that we close uh the session? I move that we.
Second.
All right. Have a good one, everybody.
Thank you, Angie, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.